They would have to pay for it if I'm right because our ordinance is state, we may not give away one or two. Would there have to be two? That's up to them. How many houses are you putting in there, properties?
We're splitting one of them, so there'll be three individual lots, but if we donate the land to them, they'll be at their decision.
If they took it all, they would only have to... Got one connection to the sewer and water, right? They could do one senior no-step facility there for several people with one service connection. Or they could build three homes with three service connections. Could be lower the price on that if we wanted to, or is that also... Ordinance is fixed. For what price? Hook up to the sewer line. That's per ordinance.
Yeah, we can't.
That's big then. How much is that? I don't know. Let me ask.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it varies.
It's a estimated fee. My estimation would be about $20,000 per lot.
Per hook-up? Okay, any other discussion on that?
Would that be both sewer and water or...? Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, item H. Excuse me, walking trail.
So, Mr. Mayor, you and I went up, we walked along this trail. It's a nice area. I don't think it's useful for a whole lot of things. So I think the best option would be to turn it into a nature preserve and walking trail for the individuals to go from the north side of the city down towards the school area. We're in the current process of combining those two properties. And then I will seek our castmaster's assessment to maybe come up with some signs to indicate it as a park, and then we'll ask council to designate it as a park. And these properties are currently under tax rule. If it becomes a park, it'll probably come off our tax rule.
Excellent. If it becomes a park, do we have to maintain it, or can we leave it in its natural state?
I think we currently cut the grass up and down the trail, but that might be the only thing we do to it.
To make it develop.
It's a walk trail for the residents of the housing development on the end of Hook Street to the school.
Because it's not a whole lot to it. It would be a natural preserve for the most part.
And it's a wetland.
Yeah.
Very wetland.
Would we need to provide any parking for anybody that shows to drive over there to walk?
No, there's nowhere, no room to make parking.
That's what I imagine.
It's strictly a walk, not a park. Do our assessors give us, you know, some kind of odds on they're taking it off? How good are the odds?
I don't like to discuss odds on such a serious matter.
That's just the later discussion.
But parks are not taxed.
This seems like an appropriate remedy.
That's my understanding.
Okay, moving on to item I.
Our new IT right service will be in the City Hall in November, please, to set up their service. I understand council has some issues with their emails and other stuff in the past, so if you could write those things down and let the city manager know, we will look at fixing those things. On 16th four, they're after.
Thank you for providing that new service so quickly.
Have to do it.
All right, so if anyone has any issues with their connection, come and see them. I believe item J is our next topic?
Yep, this is more of the things that's gonna keep coming back because it really kind of just annoys me. Main Street's such a lovely area, and I think we could do so much better. Part of the problem is, of course, we're the government. We can't go around just changing things willy-nilly. It's not our private business, and it's not our private building to fix. But certainly we'd like to encourage it if we can. So I'm going to try to identify the buildings, identify the windows, make contact with the owners, and see what we can do coming to an accord to make Main Street look a little nicer.
Okay. Item K, urban art.
Yep, so there's a ton of options for bringing art to the city. Murals on a wall, chalk on the sidewalk, painting the fire plugs. There's a million different things we can do to bring a little color into the city. I just wanted to bring this to council for any discussion that they might have.
I just think it sounds exciting.
Great. I know Mr. Hopkins has talked on occasion of art mural on some of the buildings.
Yeah, and you've got a walk trail to handle some different... I just want kids to come in. If you collaborate with the businesses and handle, you know, like an art con just with sidewalk art. You know, and tie into some of the different events. And then the murals, we were talking about trying to get some of that, somebody said something about an ordinance about it. It could be classified as a billboard or something like that. They're not amortizing anything. It shouldn't be a billboard.
Many moons ago, when I was in high, middle school, they had an art club, and we used to go up and paint the big windows in McDonald's. And of course, that was in the old building, way before the one they have now doesn't have new windows. But, I mean, I feel like that could even be an option. I don't know if they still do an art club. That was quite a while ago, but...
It's cool.
Yeah, I mean, just to have window art and the classes could compete. I mean, they could even have a vote for the community. I think that'd be great.
And that's what we've talked about. We want to have to do... Part of this is why I had to hold back, because some of my... You know, I shouldn't mention it, but there were some moments like we should wait and see what... The Red Flamingos are maybe doing things how bad does Miller's stuff on their toes? And like, well, they're talking about indoor, we're talking about outdoor. It shouldn't be any kind of...
Yeah, and I mean, Red Flamingos.
What's from that?
It's September, October.
Right.
And so it's, they don't dominate the whole year.
That was my point.
They've got a weekend, and good for them, and they all love that weekend, but there are 59 others.
Probably become burdensome in the news, but like for Thanksgiving, they could have a window decoration. If the chamber would step up or whatever, to promote some type of window decoration, but that's...
I think Mr. Willnax is to clarify if I'm wrong. You're talking more about like actual colored sculptures and...
I'm talking about anything.
Okay.
Main Street for all its beauty lacks color.
Exactly, like amazing sculpture, it's sound... I'm the first one on the boardwalk.
Yep, the library's new sculpture is great. I love it. I love public art. I think it brings your eye, I think it brings...
Isn't the person who did that, isn't he the same one who worked for the school and did the red hot...
He works for the school, but...
I thought he was, I thought he was like a...
He's independent.
Okay.
He is an artist. He's done artwork for other locations, the, down at Rockford, at Dan, he has one down there and stuff.
I want it to...
Right. As a matter of fact, if you guys will recall, our miniature libraries that Donna Clark and I talked about, I want those to be very colorfully painted, because that's art. I think people come to your city and they see a dull, brown beige street, they're not gonna stop. But if they see something colorful, they might stop and take a look around. Item L. The public park smoking ban. As we discussed earlier, I think there's some issues that we may want to listen to further. I just wanted to bring this to front council, just get your general idea of where we might proceed. I think it's good in some ways, it's bad in some ways, but I think it's worth exploring more in the future.
That would make sense.
Well, yeah, the public park smoking ban was to cover all of our parks. For instance, in the Morley Park, only in Morley donated that property to Cedar Springs for adults. Initially, there was no need to be any kids in that park. He wanted to have a place where adults could go and be adults without hearing kids scream. And so, you know, they moved a kind of field in there, and they made it into a public park for kids and everybody. And so at some point, you still have to realize that there's adults out there. That not just, everything's not just for the kids. I do a lot of things for kids, but they're not the only ones out there. And when you start regulating that the parks are only for kids or kid activities, where do the adults go?
Well, I'll tell you, Mr. Hopkins, I don't like smoking either, and I'm an adult. So it's not necessarily adults versus kids, it's smokers versus non-smokers. It's also...
Asthma.
People with asthma.
I'm one of those people who can't be around smoke.
People who don't like cigarette butts being polluted on the ground.
I'm one of them, I don't like that.
So, I think there's, like I said, there's a lot of good and bad. I'd just, I'd like to discuss it more.
Personally, I'd rather see one saying no, sitting and standing and smoking along Main Street on the sidewalk. You know, behind a building, smoke a cigarette or whatever, that's one thing. But when you're sitting there in front of, you know, aisles of people standing around smoking cigarettes or whatever. But as far as sitting at a park smoking cigarettes or whatever, that's a different volume. It's a different... At least to me it is.
And... I would like to think that, at least from my perspective, I make an attempt to not smoke around people who don't smoke. Because my decision to destroy myself does not mean I get to destroy you. So I'm in favor of, y'all could go over in that corner, and here's your little butt pants, you don't litter on the ground. Because nobody likes that, that's gross, even to me as a smoker. I don't want something, your mouth has been all over, all over the ground. That's disgusting.
Wait, what are you saying, but?
But, but, anyway. In any case, I think that if you make it a universal ban, what you're gonna have is people are just gonna go to the one, unless they're gonna get caught out. And I don't think you're gonna solve the problem, I think you're just gonna move it.
I think you're probably right.
Mr. Clark? You avoiding your phone?
No, I was just gonna say humorously that it would give Jason something extra to do, trying to enforce it, so it's not a very ideal policy.
Who's phone?
The way I look at it, I smoked for 20 years, so I didn't realize it was that obnoxious at the time. But of course, at my age, we were raised a cigarette smoker, it was just a normal kind of life. But now, when I'm in a, at the park, in an audience or group of people, for somebody to stand right in the middle and fire up a cigarette or whatever they're smoking, that's a bad idea. I don't care if you move away from the folks that are there, at the picnic table, or at the activity. I don't care if you go smoke, just don't sit right in the middle of the families and the group and fire one up. It's just very bad manner. And when you throw the butt on the ground, it's littering, so you're looking at a whole different aspect there. That's a lot of...
Ms. Tom?
I'm still kind of trying to process this. I think maybe I need to look at work on it, and it looks like another community. As a person who has like older reconstructive vehicles, sinus surgeries, reactive airway, and I, when smoking was a thing, I could not be where smoke was. Like I did not go into restaurants and people for, I was in my 30s in that long past, and oh, I can go to these places now. Because if I went to these places before, I couldn't breathe, my airway would shut up. So I understand this need to not have smoking, as a person who hate me around it. I also understand that the people who smoke are highly addicted, and it's not illegal. And I don't know, maybe we need to, I'm kind of leaning towards people providing the space, but I understand enforcement issue. Is there a way to make like a provided space without enforcement, or not expecting enforcement? Like assuming that people will do it just because, I don't know, it's polite? If we provide it?
I think Ms. Nixon has stated before that a lot of smokers will sell police.
Right.
I think they will too.
If we give them a space?
It doesn't hurt to have a sign, you know, saying smokers, please be courteous, you know? When there's large groups.
Especially if you provide the space, I mean, and there's really no reason that they have to be in the midst of a bunch of people who don't want to deal with it. Or maybe just go over here, reluctant peace, and they'll just do a thing, and then come back when they're done.
And I might be wrong, but I feel like it's become, like not for many people to smoke. Like it's become a...
Politically, yeah.
Yeah, like I always feel like I see this person smoke, so I feel like, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry for you.
Okay, what do you, you know, put weed...
They're not rude.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I will do some more research on this, and I'll present my findings at the meeting.
That sounds amazing.
I guess I have one question. Have we received any complaints about smoking in the parks?
Complaints, no, but as I discussed before, this came from the Parks and Recreation Board.
We did, no, Jerry.
I'm just saying, I don't know if we had or we hadn't, and that's what I wanted to find out. If it has been a problem, or if it's a case of we not create a smoking area, if we make great non-smoking areas. If you're seated watching a concert in the park, you can't smoke in that area. If you want to walk peripherally, you can do it, that's fine. You don't have to have a designated little corner or that, or something like that, and that's just... I live with a smoker, okay? I've been around smokers all my life, I've never smoked. But probably inhale as much smoke as anybody else around, okay? But if it hasn't been that big issue, and I keep going back, in part because my job is enforcement of things, looking at what kind of problems they're gonna have with enforcing this. How much time is going to be committed walking through a crowd trying to get them to put a butt out? And like I said, they're just gonna run tight and do it, so...
Somebody, again, like these ordinances, depending on what we actually do, we oftentimes don't go out and look at those ordinances.
Exactly.
It's a little tool. Some of them mentioned before, the teenagers that are of age, that's our complaints that we get at the park. We make complaints to people sitting at picnic tables and smoking. And they go there, and they're sitting at picnic tables and smoking, and when we leave, they're still sitting at picnic tables and smoking. Because they're 18 years old, and they have nothing to say they can't. So I think just as the city manager, some of these ordinances isn't necessarily affects strictly, we're not hunting smokers. It's kind of like things that can be a tool when, if that problem occurs. If you get someone say, you have to put that out, or you have to go over there. I wouldn't assign that as an objective control.
That's what I'm saying.
Kelvin? Okay, could, now this is a could, if we just have a no-smoking ban or a new amphitheater trunk.
We could certainly do that.
And assign a designated non-smoking area.
We certainly could do that.
As the seating area for, in general, as a non-smoking area. Now, that still creates a problem for enforcement end, but maybe the people would sell the police, and if they wanted to burn one, go step somewhere, over by the bathroom or somewhere.
The only issue I see with that is now we're segregating the city into different parts, makes knowing what the rule is difficult. And the chamber does put on events in more of the park and other things, so...
It also doesn't solve the kids in Morley Park, that are around the grounds.
So I would like to do more research on that.
Yes, that would be great. Give us some more info and we can discuss it some later.
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, do you permit me the Riddle Park dog park?
Yes.
Similar, it's something I was approached by, you know, citizens, they'd like to see a dog park. I don't want the city to have to pay for it, obviously. It's something we could put as a capital improvement at some point if we wanted to. What I suggested to the ladies was that they come to council, tell them, tell you guys what they wanted, and then propose an action plan. Now, what a lot of other communities will do is that they will donate the land, or lease the land for a dollar for 10 years or something. And that allow a 501(c)(3) to gather the money together to put the fencing and whatever else. So at this point, I would say that would be my preferred strategy for getting a dog park, is to allow a 501(c)(3) group to get the money together, get the plans together, and then we could donate land or lease land for a cheap rate if we wanted to.
The question I would have is if we release a property to that individual group or whatever, would it be taxed?
That's something we'd have to look into.
We're in that dilemma now.
Could it be as similar as what we do in Cedar Field?
Well, or a dog park could just be considered part of the park.
Correct, definitely. Yeah, okay. If we could get some more info or do some research.
And could you have me take a look at the park?
Yeah, I just, we just, we're talking out front.
No, yeah.
And Riddle Park is what they brought up, and I'd be one footed, I don't know.
I would love to see a sewer park developed in some way. I feel like it's really underutilized.
Yes, Mr. Mayor has said before, though, if you want to understand, we've got severe issues up there with vandalism and...
Well, and I'd like to kind of figure out how to solve that. I mean... Get rid of it, like get rid of your park.
Two thirds of that's gonna be water retention. There's gonna be a lot of, that could change up there.
But there's still gonna be space.
So I guess we could look at...
Big space.
We could look at the water retention fund, and then what's left over might be developable, developable into a dog park at some point.
There you go, that could be part of the math. Dogs like lions.
Ms. Tom?
I don't think Riddle Park is big enough, that's my opinion, that's really...
You know, I actually walked around Riddle Park the other day all by myself. It's bigger when you walk around it.
Yeah. We walk the park a lot.
Which, by the way, the sheriff's deputies came to investigate the strange man walking around Riddle Park.
Wow, that's good to know.
So they are on top of their game, the weird men. Mr. Mayor, a library appointment, I'd like to push that to December. Of course, we didn't know if you were gonna be re-elected to your position, we're thankful that you are. But we do have a couple people who are interested in the position, and I don't think it would hurt to wait till December.
Any interested parties, please send a letter requesting the appointment. We have one opening, and then I have some other persons that I will be talking to for appointments on some other boards of commission.
Do you have a list of any, you have enough people? Like I might have some people I can send to you?
Give you the link.
Do you, what positions are open? Because to just say...
I'll give you the list.
It would be awesome to just say, I might have some kind of board that the mayor might be able to appoint to.
See the clerk.
We will advertise these open positions so that all the citizens have a chance to make a...
Yeah, usually that's hard to fill, you're trying to, like, try to talk to them.
And that is something I was thinking about bringing to the council next time, is maybe developing an alternate position for that, for a reason, but that's not paid for today.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, a Small Business Saturday banner. Again, my lovely assistant held it up before. It's a small poster. I'm not opposed to putting it in the window of City Hall. It advertises for all the small shops in town. Small Business Saturdays, something I believe in strongly. My only issue is that I'm afraid that the chamber might want to do this every other day, or that they might say, I'd like to advertise Perry's Place at City Hall, and I'm not okay with that. As long as it's advertising all businesses and on a short-term basis, I'm okay with it. I don't know if council had any other things to say about it.
We comply with our city ordinance, sign ordinance, so we have the road case.
Sure.
Thank you, great, good idea. Item P, this will be a CDPT amendment to their developmental license. And if you remember back, we didn't know if we were gonna get these other properties, which we now have, and this would allow them to, now, once they transfer to us, amend their agreement, allow them to build on. Am I correct to assume that?
Yeah, I'm only sorry that I was only able to get this in front of you guys today. The CDPT did ask me to do this earlier, but I've been rather busy. From what I understand, they want to go in and start clearing up brush and cleaning up and doing some other things. But yeah, we would encompass the property that was just donated to us, and it would just be an addendum to the license agreement you guys already have with them. So I'll try to get that ready for your next meeting.
Any other discussion on the comments on the discussion items before we move into action? Good hearing none. Item A.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was drinking water.
No problem.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you appoint Darla Elkin to her office as finance director and treasurer for the city of Cedar Springs. As I indicated before, she was a unanimous choice of the hiring committee. She's been on the job for two weeks, she's doing an excellent job. I feel very lucky that we were able to snag her out of the EMT, and I think she'll be doing a great job for the city for years to come. I'd ask you to appoint her to that position.
I would like to make that appointment, if there's no opposition from the council.
Make that motion.
One second.
We can... There's been a motion and it's been supported or seconded to appoint Ms. Darla Elkin for our current... Any discussion? Hearing none, I would do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Hopkins? Yes. Mrs. Nixon? Yes. Mr. Powell? Yes. Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley? Yes. Mr. Alvo, yes, motion carried. You're up. That a clerk managed, clerk? This also would be appointing her to take care of all the baking matters and repairs of the city for any service banking issue.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat. I, Darla Elkin.
I, Darla Elkin.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The city charter and quota ordinances.
The city charter and quota ordinances.
Of the city of Cedar Springs.
Of the city of Cedar Springs.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of finance director to the rest of the city. I will faithfully discharge the duties of finance director to the rest of the city.
This would also... This would also, in the current point, Mrs. Elkin is our representative for the Parks and Recreation Board. Thank you. I would want to support. Moving on to action item B, mingle with Chris Kringle community event application.
As I stated before, I did push this application around, my department heads and the sheriff's department, they indicated they were okay with it. From what I understand, this event has happened in the past, has not had any issues. So I would ask that you approve this resolution allowing mingle with Chris Kringle to be a community event.
Will the council? Mr. Mayor, we approve the motion to approve our resolution 20-1629, mingle with Chris Kringle making it a community event.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve mingle with Chris Kringle as a community event coming up. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Go ahead, Mr..
We did have a site modification from the past couple years. We started having sanders set up at the corner, and that's what we set up in the Legion. So that it gets out of the elements. We still have an officer hired near that intersection for classing lots. And we'll still have the roadblock out there, as, just because there's a lot of kids and parents. They don't have overflow there.
Tree lighting.
Right, so the tree lighting part of it is, you know, more like you're only gonna have people standing around that for a half hour or whatever, maybe an hour at times.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
And you wanna make a tree damage?
Sure. I'd be glad, honored, thank you.
There's a man who's in town, and he gave his first show up with the dogs. They were pulling him in a sleigh down the...
That's a possibility.
Okay.
What's the date on it?
The 3rd. So it's the first Saturday in your summer.
Great. And I'm a few...
And then he comes, and he wants to walk in the parade or the glorified entrance for Santa Claus, which he don't like, Father.
So wonderful. I have a roll call vote. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon? Yes. Mrs. Conley? Yes. Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Clark? Yes. The call votes, yes. Great time. Item C, motion to approve resolution 20-1629 of the property transfer of the Brooks property to the city pursuant to the 425 agreement. If everyone wants. What's the will of the council?
I'm motion to approve the resolution 2016-29, first... I'm motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty nine, first property transfer.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Uh, it's open to discussion.
At one point, hey, we talked about water and sewer. Under Article Four of the four twenty five, four point one A.
Yes.
References, construction and costs. I don't know if any of you or all of you have read that. Uh, part of it indicates that the township would be the ones responsible for the extension of sewer lines. Although I don't see in there where it says the water lines, just to state that. Was that ever addressed with the township?
In the resolution that's on the, that we're voting on, request the city water and sewer sanitary sewer service to the property is approved. And it would have to be approved by all of our right commissions.
That's what I'm saying. Was it approved? Did, has it been addressed with the township?
The township had a request before twenty-
They have requested the transfer of the property with the, the agreement that we would provide the water in the sewer. But it didn't address the lines. Okay, are we just assuming then that the, because the development itself is going to put the line in the way they want to put it in? That that relieves the township of the burden of providing the sewer lines?
That was my understanding.
Our understanding.
Okay, if that's what everybody is understanding, that's fine, but we're not living in flight by the four twenty five then, so.
Well, if the, I guess this is my estimation of it. If the township pays for it or if the business pays for it, it's not a burden on the city. The four twenty five, that piece of it is to protect the city. So regardless of who else is paying for it, as long as it's not the city, I, I guess I don't care.
And then they will be required to build it to our standards. Correctness affecting?
To the property line, yes, but, um, from the property line into, into their property, we don't really care what they put in because we don't maintain it.
They have to just build it to construction standard.
Correct. Yeah, that would be the plumbing code from that, that point on.
So, and, and I'm very glad that you, that you brought that up to give a piece of it up because I guess I wasn't aware that part of the four twenty five agreement was that someone, township, pay you, would, uh, would take care of the, uh, the cost for the lines. So if, if it's the case that someone would be responsible, I guess what I don't understand then, why are we allowing them to cut across property? That I'm, it, it really just wasn't very well thought out. And I don't understand why we're not enforcing that. It's not gonna be a, a burden on this specific business because it's someone's responsibility to take the water around the corner. I, I guess I don't understand why we're doing this at all. This sounds like the potential for hotness in the long run. Why are we not enforcing this if this is the case?
It was my understanding that the reason it was being done this way, as Mr. Stresman indicated earlier, was that it was gonna be a significant cost to somebody, it was my understanding it was going to be the, the Brooks people themselves. To the point where had they been forced to bring it all the way from Pine Street, uh, that it would kill the project. Now, you know, I, I haven't had the opportunity to go in-depth and read, you know, the past and the history of- Yeah, the four twenty five and whether the township actually would, um, pay for that. Cause they may have been under the understanding themselves that they wouldn't have made the request if, uh, it would have to come from Pine Street because it would have been significantly more expensive.
That was my understanding.
So the only reason that they would make the agreement would be if we were to run the line from White Creek Avenue. Cause they may have some kind of indemnity clause with Brooks. I'm just not sure what's happening on their end.
If I'm, if I'm wrong, but someone isn't required to trigger the four twenty five? Like, they could just say, we're not gonna, we're just not gonna build it. Like that's an option for them. They could say, that's too much money. We're not gonna spend it. We're not gonna go.
I was looking at it tomorrow and if we had paid two hundred thousand dollars to put that in, would we do it to put?
You would say no. You'd say, no, you're not gonna build it.
So where are we gonna go with that?
So the workaround was, again, this is my understanding of it, that, that this is paying for it, that this endorsement, oh God, this is wild, you know? This was bad, wasn't it? As we thought. Okay. Tom's on me. Um, the, this was, this was kind of a, a way to divide it up so no one had the full brunt of the pain of it. And then someone was willing to trigger the four twenty five if they didn't have to pay that piece of it. With then us saying, we'll let you do this, but only in this circumstance. That's my understanding, but I could be wrong.
Okay, and according to, if I'm reading this correctly, they, someone could require the, the business going in to, to bear the burden. So perhaps that's where it was taken down.
Yeah.
It is, it's my understanding this is a lateral. So it's the business that pays for it, wouldn't. The minute it comes off of the, the big line, our line, they have to pay for every inch of it because it's theirs. It's not going across public property. It's going across private property easement.
Correct.
So it's their lateral, just like our lateral comes from the, the big sewer line to my house, past mine.
I got, not even half a feet.
So it's really not a, uh, issue for the city pay for or someone to pay for as long as we approve it and that's up to standards. Am I, am I talking right here, Tom?
Well, the city's gonna look at it like it's a lateral.
Right.
Um, it'll probably be a six-inch water main, uh, because of the fire flows they're gonna need for the fire suppression system. But that's not, a, a six-inch water line isn't adequate to feed multiple businesses like that. So we're looking at it like, like a lateral. There's gonna be a shut-off right at the, at the property line up by, uh, White Creek. There'll be a valve. If they don't pay their water bill, we turn the valve off at the street, just like anybody else, uh, in the city. And they're going to, you know, run their, their sewers through a lateral. We're not responsible for it until it hits our main. So it's just like any other-
Lateral.
Lateral.
It's private, their private property.
It's private. We're not gonna maintain it. We're not responsible for it. Nothing, so.
Does that answer your question?
It, it, it does. Um, I was, I was hoping that, uh, perhaps we could have a main run down White Creek at no cost to the city. But it appears that it would eventually come back on the business anyway and have the same effect that we're attempting to avoid, so.
One here now.
Okay.
They'll cross White Creek, each service this parcel. This parcel here, that blocks White Creek and Pine, could at future date, they would take their sewer connection off of that main, the main trunk line. Not the service connection.
That six-inch will be a service connection, not, not a main water main, not a city-owned water main.
If, if we put in that agreement that, that ten-acre parcel for the Brooks will be the only tenants allowed to connect with that?
Yeah, we, the, the city, um, like I said, has total control over who uses our system anyway. So if they ever decide, yeah, we're gonna let, you know, the next parcel connect to it, we can say, no, you're not.
That, if we put that language in the agreement, then that gives you the key also to say, no.
Exactly.
Okay. Is that agreement go between us or through the planning commission?
It should go through the, it will go through the planning commission first and then come to you for approval.
Yeah. There's another, two more checks and balances basically. We have a planning commission that's gonna look over this to require this stuff. And then the final, we approve the final site plan. We're just going for the transfer. This is just to transfer the property and start this stuff moving, correct?
Yes.
My understanding.
And I, I want y'all to be exact here, completely-
Yeah.
Sure that this will not happen again. And as long as I'm here, um, it will not happen again. The developer, the property owner, everybody knows that property up there, you're gonna have to do it right the next time.
Not that we're doing it wrong.
Right, but it's not needing our, the way we usually do business.
And to piggyback on what Tom's saying, this was not me.
Yeah.
So as long as I'm here, I will take my DPW director's, uh, word to heart and proceed accordingly.
So what you're saying, Tom, is if it happens again, whoever wants to develop that property will have to tear up the road and put down the, the big pipes and the whole thing.
Right, you're gonna put water and sewer to your farther, farthermost property line.
Okay.
It's like we require of anybody else.
Okay, hang on.
The planning commission and Mr. Hopkins and I are on that. We can speculate that that lane would be put in there that no other parcels will be connected to that line.
And if the other parcels want to develop, they have to go whole hog and do the, the big, the big stuff, get off the road.
Now, you, now you can also make the stipulation that if one of the parcels adjacent, um, to that piece of property, if they want, if they want to extend test the Brooks property to get it to their property, that the Brooks property then pay for their portion of the-
Upgrade.
Upgrade.
Would that be part of our motion here, Mr. Womack, or should we allow that?
Maybe later.
Yeah, that'll be a later issue.
Okay, that'd be a later, so. Okay, everybody. No further comments? I'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. You may proceed. Thank you. Item D. Motion to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty to approve the regular meeting dates of the city council for January twenty, or two thousand seventeen through December two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty to approve the regular meeting dates of the city council from January twenty seventeen through December two thousand seventeen.
Then moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the dates? Hearing none. Have a roll call vote. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. I'll make the announcement now. I will not be here for, uh, February eighth.
We'll be happy to run the meeting.
Why, why is that, Mr. Mayor?
It will be a warm sunny Florida.
It wasn't so warm and sunny last year. Moving on to, uh, nine and communication. Mr. Womack.
Uh, just, I double.
E, motion-
You gotta do E. You already did F, what we slept to do on my cheat sheet.
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to seek a designation for Cedar Springs, the Trail Town, by the North Country Trail Association.
Second. Okay, then we're getting seconded for our Trail Town designate. Any discussion on that? This is another housekeeping situation.
I'm super excited, that's all I can say.
No further discussion or roll call vote?
It's worth time.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yeah.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries.
Uh, now, did you want us to appoint Darla to the Cedar Springs press record? Do we do that?
Mr. Mayor did that.
That's what I thought, so we're done with that. So now we're on to communication.
Now we're on to communication. No dissenting on appointing Mrs. Elkin on the Parks and Rec order?
No.
Too bad you're running. Moving on to communications. Any, uh, communications on the Grand Valley Metro Council newsletters dating ten twenty eight sixteen and eleven three sixteen? We have a Kent County report newsletter, November sixteen. Any comments on communications at this time?
I will add that, um, Kent County Sheriff's Department did thank all the communities that passed the resolution and supported their nine-month surcharge, which passed.
Yes. That will also help our fire department sort it down.
Head the zoo.
And the-
Crazy.
We're supposed to get some money off the DDA from that zoo thing. I didn't know if you-
Yeah, there's some projects or something. There was also, uh, a subpart of that-
They could catch your money.
Yeah. We might capture some for the DDA, so that could be used possibly the DDA for facade or, or projects that they have.
I wasn't gonna bring it up at this meeting, but we do have a DDA meeting coming up, I think in the beginning of December, maybe the end of this month. And we were going to discuss some options about, um, getting some more money for the DDA.
Yes, and then maybe we'll know by that time what, and the amount we may get from any, from that.
And everyone did luck getting that worm out of your head. You heard the video. You're not going until you vote for the zoo.
I bet.
I forgot until you brought it up.
I just hit mute every time that stuff come up. Moving on to department reports. Mr. Manager, Mr. Womack.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I usually don't have a whole lot to add to this because most of my thoughts in my head appear on paper in front of you in the form of an agenda. Um, but of course, as some of you may know, who has visited my office recently, can't tell me who has not.
I'm, I'm a little busy. It's too late.
Of course, you're all welcome, but I've got a giant, brand-new board, which I'm able to write down my long-term projects on there. Um, and some of them appeared on your agenda, but, uh, one thing, a couple things. So the boardwalk that the CDDT is working on is gonna be seeking letters of support, uh, to help us get the grant. That's something I'll be bringing to you once we maybe have a template. That would make it easy for you guys to write one. And I'll ask board members of the public to write one as well. Oh, yes, uh, the wastewater treatment plants. I've been in contact with a company that puts together turnkey solar arrays. This was something that was brought to me by the West Michigan Planners Association. Um, apparently this group will find, uh, users, heavy users' electricity and will install a solar array, which will provide you with obviously clean, cheap energy. And the city then in turn pays a reduced fee for the electricity to the owner of the solar array. So it's kind of winner all around. There are obviously some issues which I'm trying to work out, but, um, at least our treatment plant spends forty-five hundred, five thousand dollars a month in electricity. We have a forty to fifty acre plot right next to it, which could be a solar array. So it's something I'm working on. There's some regulations that might impact on it, but maybe something I'll bring you guys back on.
Ron Star, thank you.
Are you looking into that, looking into the Solar Creek and Road? Have you heard about that?
Uh, I have. Um, there are lots of issues with that too.
I figure you'd start with sign wash first before you look into it.
Well, I'll tell you what. In my research for this solar array, um, there is a town in Ohio that, uh, puts some big covered parking in its parking lot. And of course, the cover of the parking lot was solar powered. So they have, you know, an acre of solar power just in their own parking lot. So I think in the future, that's the way things are gonna happen, but let's start with this.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions with the Department of Public Works?
Infrastructure alternative and operating maintenance at the Lee Park Park?
May tour.
Yeah, I did time. I was glad we were able to do that.
Mr. Mayor? I have, I have two things. The first one is, uh, um, thanks to the, uh, the wonderful efforts of Sergeant Kelly, Officer, or Deputy Van Dyke, we did re- recover, uh, the monument, uh, that was stolen out of the West Park. Took me a while, but I found the actual person. Took me a while, but I found the actual person who made that monument. He came from Minnesota. Luckily, he had five other places he had to do repairs on different monuments. And we caught him right at the right time, he said, "I want to be in Michigan next week. I can stop by and repair it," and we just got the bill today, it was $550. And if you, if you look at it, it looks brand-new. He actually welded it to the boot, which it was not welded before, he welded the base and welded it to the boot, so it's not coming off in there again, so. The other thing is, I was asked to appear at the Kent County Road Commission's Board meeting, which I did, and I thank them profusely for all the help they've been giving us lately with the North Main Street. They also, anytime I call, either Jerry Byrne or Wayne Harrell, you know, they always take my call and answer my questions. Just great assets to be able to partner with the county, especially with our budget, because it was an awesome thing, so. I thank them profusely and little smooches, so hopefully, we can continue in the future to get them help as well.
Thank you.
I was going to request that Sergeant Kelly step up and you two, and thank you both personally for the diligence and quick action on recovery of that monument. And then Saturday, I did see it stopped there, there was a fellow that did the repair, and thank you. Thank you both. I bothered and what? Thank you.
The thought he has to report, so.
Fire chief, fire chief.
I don't have anything. Well, I do. We applied for a FEMA grant today, it went in today, it's not going to be tweaked till next week. I hope everybody's sitting down. We applied for turnout gear, six sets, 12 sets SCBA's. Ours are working condition and as Mr. Groves will tell you, integrated. It's like going to Best Buy and buying your computer before you get it home, they have five updates. There's nothing wrong with our bringing apparatus, SCBA. However, 12 new sets, we're selling about, six sets of complete turnout gear. And as councilmen might remember, back in February, March, we put $30,000 in the budget for a new Jaws of Light that got shoved back. So we priced some, a new set electric that runs on batteries, which eliminates headaches of dragging hoses up and down, hydraulic fluids leaking out of the hoses and stuff. To the total of $136,100. That's a 5% match, which we would be paying about roughly $6,500. There is money in the budget for that, just not specifically earmarked for that. We can, we can tweak that a little bit. As I take Mrs. Hopkins out to lunch, maybe we'll find a way. That will probably be.
Spring for the ice cream.
Spring, March, April, May, sometime in there, to see if we're rewarded. I just want councilmen, don't give them a heads up, that we are actively pursuing grants. We haven't had a lot of success the last couple that we have, but we don't give up, we still keep plugging away.
You didn't have the success for a while.
One other thing, real quickly, it was discussed at one of our meetings at the station that I would like to see, and I don't know, I haven't got with Mr. Wolfman yet, but I would like to see that all new construction might require a Knox box. For those that don't know, it's a little box on the outside of the building that has a master key to the doors. We have a master key to that box, where we can get into any business that has one, so we're not ripping and tearing the doors and busting windows and stuff like that. And the police could also call, and we've had a couple occasions up the Red Cone Linkers where they've called us, we have a master key to get into the building. And Metal Creek can help. So I would like to sit down, maybe after the first year, and get with Mr. Wolfman and see if there's something. I don't know, as though we can require the business to have that, but strongly suggest. I know I've passed out a few applications and they've been accepted. They're, they're kind of expensive, but it's a thought.
Have to take this to the hand.
It would behoove them, yes, because you can buy a Knox box for $300, $400, where a window, a fake glass window is probably a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah. It's worse, yeah.
Other than that, I just wanted to give a couple heads up that we are actively pursuing the grants.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the fire department for, you know, dealing with, I know there are a lot of inconvenience up there on the new construction site.
It's been a challenge.
Hopefully, we can get through some of that for you folks to ease your burden with the parking issue.
It'll get better, I just keep telling the guys, they get frustrated because they have to park.
I'm sure.
Like Mr. Wolfman said here at the last meeting or so, a couple meetings ago, it's like herding cats. There's several different places that we can't park that we're used to, and there's some home on the ground, but I'd have to tell them, hang tight, it'll get better, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
And thank you.
Go ahead, any questions to the chief?
I just, first I want to say, hooray on Halloween, you all are rock stars. My son is so excited to go get his candy with fire barn.
Watch out.
You were just wonderful. But then I wanted to know, have we started to move anywhere yet on our new fire barn, like where it's going to be, or?
No.
Okay.
I, because I have talked to a couple of the people that are supposedly on this fire station relocation committee, and I haven't sat down. Mr. Wolfman was on vacation, I've been busy, we've got some things done at the station that needed to be done before the end of the year.
It's all good.
So I thought, you know, and there's these going off and Thanksgiving. Maybe I'd set a tentative date for the first of December sometime, and see if we can't just sit down and toss some ideas across the table.
That's great, let us still have the date, and, you know, you're not going to be able to get everybody off that commission, but we get who we can and start that process.
I, I think we can do it very well. Just real quick, I'm walking aboard to Rebecca and Vera, I'm looking forward to working with them. Congratulations to Rebecca on her first election that went over without a hitch. My wife is down here and said it was pretty steady and things went perfectly.
Broke a record with a little.
Congratulations and awful award.
That's what she said.
Mrs. Powell?
Any updates on the fire truck, or grandma, as Steve put it?
No. After the meeting, I'd like to slap my hand because I've been a little lax in getting up there and talking to Carl, and I understand it's a work in progress. I really don't, I'd rather have him take an extra year and do it right than try to hurry as long as, like Mr. Mayor all said at that meeting, that it takes five years to restore something to the way we want it to be.
Now, I'll step up and take the hit for that. I told Pete Freiter to tell that person not to do it till next year because we don't have anywhere to park us.
Right, right.
And that's a very big concern. We, once we get to, well, that might be something we talk about when we talk about relocating the fire station.
There you go.
We're going to build the fire station in two to three years, so the Monalee will have a nice home.
I will try to get an update for next council meeting. I don't know if Carl, let me take a picture or not, because I think he wants the before and the after picture.
I know we have acres, we have high enough.
Thank you, thank you. One final question for Mr. Wolfman. What is a fire plug?
Fire hydrant?
Okay, thank you.
Is it not the same thing?
Anything else? Thank you, chief, and all your firemen.
Chief, you were talking about the air packs. Their operation, you're not trying to replace those right now, then?
We don't have to replace them, I would like to replace.